Good evening. I'd like to call to order the public hearing for the short-term rental committee. We are recording this, this public hearing and ask you again if you can to silence your cell phones at this time. Let's all rise to say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, moderation under God, individual liberty, justice for all.
I'm required to read the notice and publication of this public hearing, so bear with me with that. This is the Town of East Line Ad Hoc Short-Term Rental Committee Notice of Public Hearing Concerning the Draft Final Report and Recommendations to the Board of Selectmen. Notice is hereby given that the East Line Ad Hoc Short-Term Rental Committee will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, February 25th, 2025, at East Line Town Hall, 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, Connecticut, to receive comments concerning the committee's draft report and recommendations to the Board of Selectmen. Copies of said report and related documentation are available for review in the East Line Town Clerk's office and on the Town of East Line website, www.eeltownhall.com. Interested persons are invited to attend and be heard. This was dated East Line, Connecticut, the third day of February 2025. The Town of East Line Ad Hoc Short-Term Rental Committee by myself, Ann Santoro, its co-chairperson. This notice was filed with our town clerk on February 3rd of 2025. It was published in the day newspaper on February 9th of 2025. It was also posted on the town website in the news section as well as on the committee's webpage. So that takes care of notice. Just want to bring to your attention a couple of items before we have you take the podium. This is actually our third public hearing. Our first was September 25th, 2023, and our second was January 29th, 2024. And these public hearings were in accordance with the charge that this committee was given by the East Line Board of Selectmen. Just to remind you all, we are an advisory body to the Board of Selectmen. We don't make and pass, you know, rules and regulations here in town, including for short-term rentals. So just want to emphasize the advisory nature of this board, okay, this committee. I'd also like to point out that the, this committee has given many opportunities to the public for comment on the issue of short-term rentals in town. We have public delegations at all of our meetings. We've always had them, in addition to the, the public hearings that we've had, and we've invited folks to email us, myself and my co-chair here, Gary Caccello. Today, this evening, we're asking for your comments about the draft report and recommendations, which, which has been posted. It's our second report, if you can keep all these first and second things straight in your head. This is our second report. Last spring, in April of 2024, we provided a status report to the Board of Selectmen, basically giving them details of our research, our thoughts, and our initial recommendations. We did that because we were waiting for a Connecticut Supreme Court decision to be rendered, which would be, which would be and was, in fact, very relevant for us, and that was the Whibley case, which is discussed in detail in this report. So just keep all of that in mind. That decision was rendered at the end of July of 2024. And we paused our meetings, met up again in, I think, September, late August, September of '24. I'd like to just introduce members so you know who we are, so we'll start over there with Greg. Greg, okay, McIntyre, go ahead. And then Paul, Paul Formica, next. John Salino. Gary Ferruccia. Myself, Ann Santoro.
Gary Chikello.
And Ann Thurlow. Okay. Ann and I were initially given these posts because of your work on zoning, my work for Board of Selectmen, and everyone else is at large. Okay? Ground rules. Do you want to go over ground rules, Gary? Okay. When you come to the podium, please clearly provide your name and address, and, as we mentioned, try to keep your remarks to, to three minutes. We won't have a back and forth here at this public hearing. This is your opportunity to speak and for us to listen. If you have a question, just requiring clarification of something, we can deal with that. Anything else is something that we would have to discuss in full meeting. We are having a meeting following this public hearing, and you're more than happy, we'll take a break between the two events, and, and you're more than happy to, to stay for that meeting. So I think with that, we're ready to go, ready to go. So anyone from the public wish to comment on the draft report and recommendations?
I'll go first.
Sure.
Hi, my name is Laura Hadcock. I live at 16 Bishop's Bay in Saunders Point.
What's your last name?
Laura Hadcock, H-A-D-C-O-C-K. So I have an Airbnb that's next door to my house, and I hate it. I despise it. Strange people are pulling in, parking where they're not supposed to. They're loud, they're obnoxious. Are the owners of the house are nice people, as they are? Do they try to make accommodations? They do. But that still doesn't separate the fact that, again, strangers are constantly coming in one night, two nights, never for anything, for any kind of length of time. So to me, it makes me very uncomfortable. When I bought my house, I did not buy a house next to a hotel. I bought a house in a community. I do not want to live next to a hotel, and that's what I am living right now. And they don't pay taxes like a hotel, they don't follow rules like a hotel, and I think that's wrong. And I think that, I'm terrified that in our community, houses become for sale and people buy them like, oh, yeah, I'm fixing it up for my daughter. No, they're fixing it up because they're going to turn it into an Airbnb. And that's happening all over in our community, and it's terrifying me. And I feel like my property value has gone down since I live next, right next door to one. And I pay a lot of money in taxes, which I'm sure everybody else does who's here today. And they just keep on going up and up and up, and I don't want to lose the value of my home and have my taxes to continue to rise. So I said, safety of the community was my concern, reduced value. I think, I think I hit on everything I, I wanted to say.
What was your address again?
16 Bishop's Bay Road.
Okay.
Where is that?
And it's in Saunders Point. And thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Before the next person comes to speak, I will need to adjust the placement of the, of this podium because of the camera view, and I'm not going to.
Can you move it?
Yeah, actually, I could use your help. See how it's in the corner? I just need to move it a tad.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. Thanks, Gary. A little, just a tad more, and that's better. Yep, thanks.
Pretty rickety. You gotta ask Dan to get it in there.
Thanks.
Oh, we'll take a donation. Thirty-five bucks, Liz.
All right. Anyone else in the public wish to address us? Be shy. Come on up.
Good evening, and I'll keep it to three minutes, I promise. Jeffrey Landrigan, business address is 38 Huntington Street, New London, Connecticut. As an aside, I live at 28 Maloof Drive, New London, Connecticut, also next to an Airbnb. I'm here on behalf of my client, the Vavitas family, who own a short-term rental property here in town. I've spoken before, this ad hoc committee before, a couple times last year. I also want to thank you for your service to this committee and to the town, being a municipal attorney for some local, other municipalities in southeastern Connecticut. I know how important volunteerism is to local government. I know you've been at it a long time, and I'm sure you're happy to see this kind of coming to an end, I'm sure. In reviewing the draft report, on behalf of my clients, I just want to make some following comments very quickly. Number one, happy to see that the report recommends continuing to allow short-term rentals in town. I think they're very important to a community, particularly a shoreline community, for bringing in tourism. The desire to attempt and limit their growth, however, could be problematic for the town in the future. Anytime you're creating categories of haves and have-nots, it creates conflicts. So we would hope that the town would explore that a little bit more before taking any actions on the recommendations laid out in the report. Recommendations to establish some sort of oversight through your zoning commission and zoning regulations, as I stated last year, I think this would be problematic for the town. First, it would not apply uniformly throughout your town, and, because you have certain areas of town that have their own zoning. So whatever the town zoning commission comes up with would not apply to those individuals in those other zoning districts. So it would not apply uniformly among all your residents and your taxpayers. Secondly, it creates the problem with pre-existing non-conforming uses. Regardless of any limits or restrictions that a zoning attempts to put on it, you're going to have, people are going to have the ability to argue that they are pre-existing non-conforming for short-term rentals. And if a property is determined to be pre-existing non-conforming, then it doesn't matter if the property exceeds any cap or how the town wants to try and regulate that. And third, if there are increases in properties claiming their pre-existing non-conformity, there's going to be an increase in appeals to the ZBA, which means more staff time devoted to appeals, which means more potential impacts on hiring needs for the town. It could result in being the first domino that has a lot of ancillary impacts from the town and by the town. That should probably be explored a little closer, in my humble opinion. I think the preferred way to go about it is an ordinance, which you recommend looking at it, because this would apply, apply town-wide, regardless of what zoning authorities may control particular neighborhoods. So you have that uniformity. Public Act 24143, which you mentioned in your report specifically allows a municipality to adopt a local ordinance. I think it's the way to go, and not just because I drafted one of the ordinances that is an appendix in your report. This will cover situations where, as you point out, beach communities may have different rules. Zoning districts may have different rules. A town-wide ordinance applies to everybody equally. Again, when you create situations of haves and have-nots, that's where you run into problems. And the last thing I'll say in conclusion is that I, my clients and I would like to see maybe a recommendation in the report to the Board of Selectmen that they look at retaining some type of consultant in tourism, because I think that's an area that deserves some special attention, which I don't know how much it's gotten after reading the report. You know, short-term rentals bring in out-of-towners who have disposable income, who spend that money in town here, at local restaurants, at local shops. To really understand the current state of the town's tourism, I think, is important, because what it presently is and where the town wants to go should be reviewed and analyzed in the context of what impacts and what regulations and what oversight the town is going to consider on short-term rentals, because impacts on short-term rentals are going to impact those tourism dollars potentially. So I think adding a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen that they consult or hire a tourism consultant, I think, would be prudent. Once again, thank you for your commitment to this committee and to your town. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next, anyone else?
Can I go again?
Yes, you can.
Can you name my name again?
Yes.
Laura Hadcock, 16 Bishop's Bay in Saunders Point. So the people who live in the house full-time also go to local restaurants and spend their money locally. So if you have a house in town that you're renting out, it doesn't mean that there's going to be so many more people coming to town restaurants, because it's the same number of, of homes. So it's not like, do you know what I mean? To me, that, that didn't wash for, for a reason to, to do this. And the other thing is that tourism, again, I didn't buy into a town, you know, this is a beautiful, local little town. It's a community, people live. I didn't buy into a tourist trap. I bought into a town where I can enjoy my community with, with people who live here, and I don't need to have, right next door to me, Tom, Dick, and Harry's renting out the place. I don't, I don't think that's right. So I just had to say that, that, that didn't make sense to me, how tourism was going to increase, because we're not increasing the number of homes, we don't, it's not a hotel that you're bringing, you know, so many more people. It's just the same houses. So if somebody lived there full-time, they would still be using the community and going out to dinner and drinks in the local places and all local restaurants. So, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, yeah, come on up.
I have a question.
Sure, you can ask a question, and we may not be able to answer depending on the specific.
I think this one you can. My name is Barb Johnson-Lowe. I live at 3 North Road in Niantic. And I'd like to clarify what you, what the town defines as pre-existing non-conforming use. Is that with regard to the house that is purchased, or is it with regard to, let's say, the entire community? It's very important with regard to short-term rentals. So what's the definition?
Well, I, perhaps the attorney might want to come up and answer that.
No, that's.
Well, he's not a municipal attorney for East Line. I think.
We'll handle it.
And I don't want to say it anyways. I know what it'd be. Sure. Well, I'd like to know, because I think it has a great deal of, of impact on how these, how all rentals are handled within, particularly the beach communities, but also throughout, throughout the towns. So what is the definition?
So both of us are attorneys.
Good.
But we are not going to answer your specific question, but I would point to, point you in the direction of a section in the paper.
Sure.
So if you look to section.
Could you, excuse me for interrupting, but could you read it so that everybody, it looks like there's some interest in this? Could you read the section so that we have that clarification at least?
It's, you know, I'd, I'd rather get through the public hearing, and this is something that we can do at the end, perhaps. I'd rather get through commentary, and then if we need to read this, we can, or, or you can read it in between, you know? It's very important to get through the public hearing.
All right.
So, but section nine of, of this report does address the issue of pre-existing non-conforming uses, which is an issue with both zoning and an ordinance, where whenever there's a legislative change, so to speak, in, in a town, you will have this issue.
So is it, one more thing, is it reasonable to expect that if this guy here bought my house, which has been a residential home since it was built, he could not then make it and buy, use it as an Airbnb, because that house has never been an Airbnb?
That's.
So that is not reasonable?
I, I, that's, I would say that's not necessarily the case at all, but again, I'm not going to answer your specific legal question, but just on the topic of non-conforming uses, I think you'll find pretty much what you need here.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Thank you.
You have it?
There you go. And one more comment, since I'm already up here.
Sure, yes, please, please give your comments about.
I also live in Saunders Point, which is obviously, which is a beach community, and we have, in, in my tenure there, which has been less than 10 years, I've seen a tenfold increase in Airbnb use. Now, this is a community which historically has, has had summer residence and winter residence, and typically, you know, visitors, families will come in and spend two or three weeks or four weeks or so forth, and they become part of the community. They are, they pay the fees to do that, they are responsible and respective of, respectful of, you know, the community, the communal areas. It has been my experience with the Airbnb residents that they typically will come, they don't spend, necessarily spend a whole lot of money unless they go into Mohegan Sun. They come, they typically are not two kids to a room and a couple of parents, you know, they, they fill a house, they spend all of their time in the community, and, and don't even have time really to learn, understand, respect, or participate in a responsible way in the communal areas. And I think that that's something we really need to take into consideration when we're defining these. And I will, I will conclude my remarks by saying, I walked in this, this evening and just started reading, so if you have addressed that directly, I'm very happy to, I'll be happy to read it.
Okay.
And if you haven't, please do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And again, for additional information and background, I, I can't emphasize enough looking also at our status report, which is on the webpage. That gives you a tremendous amount of background, and it's the precursor to this report. And in the interest of not repeating ourselves in the, in this draft report, we kept it a tad on the short side, but all that other information is also found, all that information that you may need as background will be found in that status report. Okay, next. Come on up.
My name is Harold Helgeson. I live at 7 High Street in Niantic. I'm also the past president of the Pine Grove Niantic Association, and I'm on the Board of Directors for the past 20 years. This is the third time I'm speaking, and I won't tie your time up, because you've heard my complaint before. We're a private beach community. We have 150 homes. We charge each homeowner a small fee to maintain the property. My problem is, we had a business that was doing short-term rentals and advertising that we have two beaches, a playground, and ample parking. Well, we have no ample parking, number one. My problem is, like the playground, and I'm going to give you an example. No one else talks about insurance, but that's my bad. If someone gets hurt in my playground, who do they sue? They don't sue the owner of the house that they're living in, or that they're renting overnight. They'll be trying to sue the association. If they go over our insurance limit, each homeowner would have to make up the difference. And why should we pay for another man or woman's business? So please think about the insurance, because no one else is talking about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, come on up.
Hi, I'm Lori Shedd-Nikerson. I live at 5 Spring Street in Niantic, and I too am a Pine Grove resident. And I just want to tell you a little bit, I think I come more from a little bit of the emotional part, too. I don't understand, I can kind of understand, but he wants to do all zoning all different. But we live in little different beach communities, and we all have our little ways of doing things, and we have our little, you know, you know, our little things that we do. However, in our beach community, which is Pine Grove, we are so close to each other. I mean, I know what somebody is cooking at the house next door to me, you know, I mean, it's very, very tiny. And we, we had one Airbnb that actually advertised as a party house. So you can only imagine what we got. It wasn't just a family coming to enjoy and to, you know, have a good time, go walk downtown, go to the boardwalk, go to the cooks, go wherever they're doing. It was constant partying, and the police did have to be called. So the problem with that, too, is that when you have short-term rentals that are advertising as that, or you're having a lot of parties, you're going to use also the police, because the police will be called, because we are all working families where we live, basically. We have retirees and things like that, but I work, my husband, we all work. So when you have somebody who's next door, and yes, they're coming for a vacation, but they're also partying loud, they're running the streets, they're drinking, they're in the hot tub at night making all kinds of noises, it's really disruptive to us as people who have to get up the next day to work. And I'm going to tell you, I do do, I go to an Airbnb in Greenport. I've been going to the same place for 12 years. And I have to let you know that Greenport in Long Island has really stepped up with their regulations, and they are making, like, where I go, it's a cute little Victorian house. It's not in a beach community, but it's on a residential street. But there, in order to rent for so long, people have the, the owner has to live in the house. So like, the owner lives downstairs, and we rent upstairs, and it kind of works out good, because if you have a problem, the owner's right there. So when people come in, real estate people come in, or people come in, they look at our community like, oh, this is a cute little community, and we want to buy a house, but we're going to turn it into Airbnb. So number one, they're going to be making a lot of money off of our community, because we have the playgrounds, we have the beaches, we have that which we work really hard for to keep clean and to, and to do all that. So they're going to be having a business making money that we don't see. Well, maybe a restaurant down there might see one, or somebody else, but why should they profit off of our little community that we work really hard to maintain? So, I don't know, it's just like, I think the people who come in and see communities, beach communities, and they say, oh, we're just going to buy a property and we're going to turn it into that, those people aren't living there. They could be somebody from the state, out of town, out of the country, wherever they're coming from. They're not living there and dealing with everything that we have to deal with on a daily basis. So am I for 30 days or longer? I could see 30 days or longer, you get people in who want to stay in a community, who want to be part of a community, who want to get to know you, to want to enjoy what you actually have, and you get to know them, too. But when you have a constant turnaround, it's really hard. And again, as Harold said, we have limited parking. We have, like, very limited parking. We have no on-street parking. Most people in our community do not have parking spaces. We have a ball field where we all park, but when you have people who are coming in or having lots of parties, all our parking areas are now starting to take up, and we have no place to park. So that's just what I want to say, so I'm coming from that point of view. So I thank you all for your community, because I too am on different committees, and it's not always a pleasant thing. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up.
My name is Spiro Paris, 44 Shore Road, Niantic. Good evening to the, to the committee. I just want to say, it's, you know, we've had the back and forth for a year and a half, and I appreciate your work. And although the back and forth hasn't been directly during these meetings, it's just been in the emails and being able to present to you and hear your feedback. A direct comment to the report, you know, I try to do my best to read it. I'm not that smart with the lawyer jargon, so I just try to do my best to understand it and, you know, try to break it down in layman's terms for, for myself. You know, you guys gathered what you gathered from the, with the conclusion that the court drew, from gathering information from the committee, from, from us, from, from various members' residents. You know, in conclusion, I'm just basically going to reiterate what I've been saying here. I've spoken a few times, and it seems like, you know, I just like to present the same points that I think are very important to this decision moving forward. You know, embracing Airbnb accommodations offers our community a multitude of benefits that extend beyond mere lodging options. By welcoming, welcoming visitors into our homes, we foster cultural diversity, creating rich exchanges that enhance our collective experience. This influx of guests. This influx of guests stimulates our local economy. For instance, in 2023 alone, Connecticut welcomed 67.9 million visitors who spent over $11 billion across various sectors, generating over $1 billion in sales tax revenue and supporting more than 83,000 jobs directly. Seasonal tourism, particularly around our parks and natural attractions, bring a surge of activity that benefits local businesses and encourages the maintenance and improvement of these public spaces. The revenue generated from tourism enables investments in infrastructure and public services, making our area more attractive to future visitors and enhancing the quality of life for residents. While professionals have highlighted the substantial financial gains Airbnb brings to our area, it's important to recognize that these observations, though insightful, are not derived from formal research. Nonetheless, the positive impacts on our community are evident. By continuing to support and integrate Airbnb into our local tourism strategy, we can look forward to sustained economic growth, enriched cultural experiences, and a vibrant, welcoming community for all. One of the great ironies over the last year and a half has sort of been that Niantic has actually been a tourist sort of town, tourist beach town for over 100 years. And, you know, a lot of the presentation over the last year and a half has been to sort of go backwards on that, where people are wanting Niantic and their communities to become closed off to the rest of the world, instead of opening tourists and people from different walks of life and other parts of the state or other parts of the United States and even the world, instead of welcoming them like communities that are absolutely booming, such as Mystic. It's kind of a great irony, even with the changes in, in daily life, you know, nobody wants to stay anywhere for more than three, four days, let alone 30 days. That's, that's not going to happen. And thank you for your time once again, and I look forward to the decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up. Oh, let's see, either one.
Hi, my name is Robert Garafallo. I live at 15 Ledge Road in Niantic. It's also in Saunders Point. So I live next door to Laura Hattcock and I have on the other side of me another Airbnb. So she has one next to her on the other side. I have one next to me. I worry about the house, other houses on my street, which is a narrow, dead-end street with limited, very limited parking, being sold and turned into another Airbnb. So when I moved here 30 years ago, I bought a house in a residential zone. Now I have a business next to me and one a few houses away. I don't live in a business zone. I live in a residential community and that's what I would like it to remain. So I feel that having Airbnbs in our communities degrades our community. It degrades the neighborhood experience for the residents. Okay? To refer to some of what the last speaker said, I've had no stimulating of my collective experience by having these people next door to me, these strangers who come and go. I've had no enhancement of my cultural experience or my life at all by having these people next door. So that is, you know, complete balderdash. I would prefer to live in a residential zone, have zoning control, you know, what kinds of businesses or should be where in town. And I don't think hotels should be in a residential zone. If we have, you know, as, as a town, we do have a long history of summer rentals and I understand that in some communities, and some of those communities have their own zoning and they control those things. I would prefer a limit, a 30-day limit. And I would also suggest that if the town is really, really wants to encourage tourism, that they develop policies, tax favored construction of, you know, of traditional lodging in areas that are appropriate, rather than trying to push lodging or tourism into the residential neighborhoods where it doesn't belong. And residential and tourist communities that are booming like Mystic, Mystic has a ton of hotels. You can, there's a lot of places you can stay in Mystic that are not Airbnbs. So that's, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Come on up.
Hi, Lowell Kahn, 2 Elizabeth Street. So also Saunders Point as well. I wanted to kind of speak a little bit later, just.
Hang on.
Oh, yeah.
Lowell Kahn.
Sorry. I wanted to speak a little bit later just because I really wanted to listen and I think my take from this is I'm sort of in the middle. So I do have a short-term rental. It's right next door to our house. You know, I come from a family, my parents, my sisters work in real estate. It's always been in our bones and as a kid, that was a common way we vacationed, were short-term rentals. And it allowed us to see a lot of different parts. I do think there's some validity, you know, in general, I'm pro-business and I, I think this town is absolutely amazing. This is where I want to, you know, retire and, and spend the, the rest of my years because I think it's amazing. As such, I take a lot of pride in sharing it with friends and family from out of town. And so, you know, I did not looking to really cut that off. We purchased the home next to us. It was an elderly woman. Unfortunately, she passed away, but hadn't been living in the home for a couple of years. But we have a very vested interest. We're very vested in Saunders Point. We, we care about our property value. But we did purchase it with the intent that it helps offset the cost of the taxes that go with a waterfront property. But I think we, there's been some really good things. When we first acquired the house, there was a family that lost their home to the fire of your neighbor. They lived in it for a year. I think we use it sometimes for our own family, but we also do do short-term rentals as well. I think when I hear these horror stories, I'm actually very familiar with the rental that they have because I have friends right in your side of the neighborhood. What I'd like to see out of this is not necessarily saying all short-term rentals need to go. The 30-day is a little bit tricky. I mean, if I get a week off from work, I'm lucky. You know, you're not going to find a ton of people that are, number one, want to, or maybe have the ability to go stay in the same place for 30 days. But I do think there's some grounds for common sense regulation. Maybe there's some logic to having it, you know, if you want to run one that you are local or at least from the state of Connecticut or somewhere nearby, having a vested interest in it. But I, I think what really makes sense to do, you know, it upsets me to hear people advertising a party house. We had, the people just left, but we had a, a short-term rental next door to us. We had a good experience with them, but we very tightly regulate, we have a noise monitor in our house. We have very strict regulations in terms of how many people. We use a property management company, but we have very tight regulations on how many people, where they can park. They're instructed not to use the community facilities. I'm not a lawyer, so I can't comment on the legality of it or the risk. I mean, none of us want to get sued. I don't know if that is an increased risk with someone renting versus, you know, one of our neighbor's friends, you know, gets hurt on the swing set. For me, it has nothing to do with lawyers or anything like that. I just feel like that's for the neighborhood. So we make it very clear in our, you know, that they're not to be, you know, it doesn't seem fair if they're using the tennis courts and neighbors, the people that live there can't get on them because someone renting a house. So I thank the committee for their efforts and I just, I, I hope there's a happy middle ground. I do think there is a problem house in our neighborhood. I'm very aware of what goes on there. And I think if we could find a way to maybe not ban them, but just have, you know, make sure that they're run as though they were our neighbors, I think that's maybe where we could find some, some common ground. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Cindy Schaffner, 5 Cory Dock Road, Saunders Point also. And I have a family home on 4 Oak Street that I just recently acquired. So I just would like you to consider people in the, in our town that can't afford to keep a family home, that I am looking at maybe some short-term rental for a short period of time because I too would like to retire. The gentleman who was just before me, ditto everything, happy medium in between, hoping that people that come in look out for their community. I too would do the same thing and keep them in mind. I don't like hearing about the horror stories. I have done Airbnb rentals for me going to places. I think if they're run right, I know I had to present three forms of letter of recommendations before I could stay at a place in San Francisco and be approved. So there are things I think that we can do to protect our neighbors from these unfortunate happenings that are happening to some of these people that are living next door. So just keeping an open mind and looking at all different perspectives. I don't envy your job, but I hope that we can keep short-term rentals in Niantic with it being regulated to protect the people that don't feel safe or, or having issues with the people next to them and in hopes that you can work with your community. I think a lot of this sometimes comes down to working with your community, going to that neighbor that's having that trouble. It might not all lay on you and giving ordinance and giving laws. It might relay on each person's community and their clubs and going and talking to them. And hopefully you can make a difference and have it more livable for each other. And I'd be willing to work with anybody to do things like that. So I would like you to keep those things in mind and keep the short-term rentals in our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else who's already spoken would like to say something else additionally? Going once, going twice?
Thank you. To you all.
Okay. All right. Yeah.
Good evening, members of the board. My name's Tristan Winkler. I'm also an attorney. My residential address, 10 Vermont Drive, Oakdale, Connecticut, 06370. Good evening, members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I stand here tonight as an advocate for short-term rentals, but also as a defender of property rights, fairness, and the rule of law. The proposal set forth by the committee seems very restrictive as it is legally dangerous, prejudicial, and inconsistent with established legal precedent. As you know, in the Webby case, which we waited forever for, the court ruled clearly and decisively that short-term rentals are permissible use of residential property unless explicitly prohibited by zoning regulations. The court affirmed that the time-based restrictions on rentals cannot be inferred, they must be stated outright. Yet despite this clear precedent, the committee's draft report proposes a series of measures that seem clearly designed to bypass and undermine this ruling. Just to be more specific, first, the committee's proposed to limit the growth of short-term rentals through caps, restrictive zoning, and minimum stay requirements seems like an indirect attempt to prohibit short-term rentals without directly stating it. These measures are not only about reasonable regulation, they are creating barriers that are so high that short-term rentals will become unworkable in the East Line. Second, the committee's preference for long-term rentals and its suggestion to restrict short-term rentals in specific zones appears to be a clear attempt to defy the Webby decision. The court explicitly ruled that short-term rentals are a legitimate residential land use and that no temporal distinction can be imposed unless it's specifically in the zoning code. Yet the committee seems determined to reframe short-term rentals as commercial operations and push them out of residential areas. This seems inconsistent with the law and it's unfair and discriminatory against short-term rentals. Third, the permitting and licensing burdens, excuse me, third, the permitting and licensing burdens being proposed, such as 24/7 contact information, stringent application processes, and the requiring, quote, "significant penalties for non-compliance" are disproportionate and punitive. No other residential land use is subjected to such heavy-handed regulation. Finally, the committee's reliance on the dissenting opinion in Webby emphasizing permanency in residential use appears to be legally unfounded. The court's majority ruling is clear. Residential use does not depend on duration. Short-term stays are not inherently incompatible with single-zone, single-family zoning. Any suggestion otherwise is an attempt to relitigate a settled issue. In conclusion, I am not proposing reasonable regulation, but what's being proposed here seems to be, go far beyond reason. This is a prejudiced reactionary effort to restrict short-term rentals under the guise of regulation and ignores both the legal precedent sent by Webby as well as the legitimate rights of property owners. I believe that East Line deserves a fair, balanced, and legally sound approach in terms of short-term rentals, one that protects the community interests, but also at the same time without infringing on property rights or disregarding established legal precedent. I urge this board to reconsider these overly restrictive recommendations and instead work towards a more reasonable regulatory framework that aligns with both the state law and respects the rights of all the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm going to go against my own interest here, but I don't.
Your name again.
Oh, Lowell Kahn, sorry, 2 Elizabeth Street, Niantic. I, I think it's important, you know, I hadn't heard the stories from some of my neighbors about the, the growth in short-term rentals. And I, I think it is reasonable, again, not as a lawyer, but for the committee to look at the, the density of these. Because I do think when we talk about common sense regulation, while I don't oppose short-term rentals, I think we do have to be, stay true to the character of the neighborhoods, these beachfront communities and stuff. And I, I think it could probably be something as simple as a percentage, like a certain number that are allowed within a designated area. I can imagine if there was no regulation on this, there are areas of the country, you know, New York City that has obscene amounts of money that far exceed the spending capability of the local residents here. And if the properties, you know, the place became popular enough, you know, in theory, all of the nice property in this area could be bought up and that could be a real disservice to the local residents and whatnot. And I think there would be a major difference in a community if you have a neighborhood where, you know, 5% or 10% versus 40% or 50% of the homes become rentals. So, you know, again, I'm, I'm really in the middle of this group, even though I own a short-term rental with the hope that we can, we find some middle ground that preserves the character, but doesn't unnecessarily impede, you know, positive business growth. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Yes, come on back.
Our Johnson Low, 3 North Road, Niantic. I just, on a personal level, and I think also for the benefit of the town, I really want to applaud our two neighbors who, who are, appear to be doing it right, are interested in doing it right. And that is something that has, they have been, they own property, they are, have a commitment to the neighborhood in which the property is located and a can active commitment to, participation in regulating their renters. Those don't, I don't know if those are things that can be regulated by ordinance, but they certainly are something that makes a difference to the residential communities in which these buildings exist. So I would urge the committee to keep that in mind as a big difference between a weekend party house and a, and a home that is rented to families for X period of time with the understanding that they will be responsible participates, participants in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay. Last call? Anybody? Okay. All right. So with that, we will end the public hearing. Again, I do invite you to stay for our meeting, which follows, so we will take a few minutes in between. But yes, and our agenda, I think Burke, you put some agendas out there. If you'd like to take a look at the agenda to get, let you know what's on the agenda for tonight's meeting. If you can't make and stay for that meeting, it is also to be recorded and you can see it probably tomorrow, as of early tomorrow on our webpage. So, so do I have a motion to?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
There we go.
And second?
Second.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's it. And I will do that.